I don't need that. That's all I do is put together.
Attendants and write-ups for 100 points?
Thank you.
Should be doubled tonight.
Get started?
Yeah.
Oh, we could. The time being at about 7:00, call a meeting to order. My name's Dick Lewis. Neil Geiber.
Freeman Pong.
Robin Peters.
Howard Burnham.
Who's our newest member, right?
Right.
Yes. And Miriam Bader, our town planner. We're gonna go through a couple of zoning board business matters and then get into the presentation tonight by the town attorney. Second item on the agenda, other than a roll call, is nomination and appointment of officers. Do we want to wait for everyone else to come, or what's your... We've got a few... two empty seats here.
Yeah, I guess we can wait.
We can wait on that. Let's see, we have the minutes of... Can you believe this, August 5th, 2008? Anyone remember that meeting? Does anyone have any motion to accept their changes, revisions?
I would move they accept the minutes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any votes? Abstained? Howard will abstain since he wouldn't even hear us. So, minutes of August 5th are adopted.
In a manner of business, we should seat Freeman Plummer and seat Robin Peters until the regular...
Other folks come. That's a good point. That's a good point, thank you. Miriam, update on the zoning ordinances passed at town elections.
Oh, right. Well, the zoning ordinance amendments that most affected the zoning board of adjustment was, remember the fence amendment? That was that we were getting a lot of requests that people wanted to put their fence on their property line. And our ordinance requires that they set it back the same as it would set back a building. So, that would be 30 feet for your front, 15 for your rear, 15 for your side. And we wanted to give people the opportunity to put their fence on their property line if they so desired. So, that amendment did pass. And the other one that affected the zoning board that we got a lot of requests was the family accessory dwelling. And that was when we had the request a couple of times when people wanted to have their relative live with them, usually like a mother-in-law or father-in-law, some of the family. So, it was still a single-family home, but yet the mother-in-law would have a separate kitchen, let's say. So, it wasn't truly a duplex. It was just the mother... a family accessory dwelling. So, that amendment passed also. Everything that we proposed, we now have enforcement of our building code that passed, and that's pretty much it.
Did the building code, does that include occupancy permit now?
Yes, now we have a certificate of occupancy.
We're still waiting for a couple of other members before we do go with nominations. Do we miss maybe... we're meeting next month, right? We have a...
Yeah, we do have a agenda item next month, so...
Yeah. Why don't we just push nominations off to the next meeting?
Okay.
And go to our main attraction. Attorney's Bernie Waugh and Associates for a presentation on all things board-related.
Okay, well, it looks like this, like we see both groups here. My name is Bernie Waugh. I'm a partner in the law firm of Gardner-Fulkin Law, which is in Lebanon. And we've done some work for the town over the past couple of years. And I make it a regular habit to offer to present a program in the community. This is not... I'm not charging for this. Most of the time, it's about sort of an annual update of municipal law development since the public, since the prior year. But Miriam and the board apparently have asked particularly to sort of have a basic board, land use board orientation-type of session, which I happen to have because I prepared a program on that for the state planning seminar that's been held at Loomin Mountain on a couple of occasions. Give me an idea, Mr. Chairman, how, when you think I should be done. Just so I...
Well, you said he's not sure, so, you know.
I would suggest when all the questions are answered.
Yeah, well, I...
Yeah, I mean, I would expect there'll be some question and answer, so...
Yeah, that's fine, so...
Hour and a half, whatever.
Okay, well, that's a good ballpark. And feel free to... I'll try and leave sometime to be in for questions about things that I haven't mentioned. And feel free to break in anytime if you are a town official. Let me give... We'll hand out. They may have some pictures back here. This handout is called Arranging Your Furniture, meaning that it's mainly aimed at things that land use boards need to think about before they actually get to the substantive issues, procedural issues and things like that. And the first one, of course, all local officials need to know about, in New Hampshire, is the right to know law.
Yeah, what's in that muscle?
The right-to-know law underlies everything that you do as a town official. And I'll give you the sort of 10-minute version, I guess, of the right-to-know law. It's important to know about because the consequences for violating it can be fairly significant, one being that if you have a meeting which is in violation of the right-to-know law, anything you do at this meeting can be declared void by the court. Secondly, if the citizen group uses the right-to-know law to acquire documents that they otherwise wouldn't be getting, they... You can be forced to pay their attorney's fees if it turns out that they needed to go to court in order to get you to comply. The right-to-know law is in two parts, one having to do with public meetings, one having to do with public records. And I'll talk about the public meetings part first. The basic principle is that a meeting of a public body must have proper notice and must be open to the public. Those are four, the four basic concepts. And what is a meeting? Well, a meeting is the convening of a quorum. The quorum, in most cases, is a majority. There are some exceptions to that. Zoning Board of Adjustment, we know you need at least three people to act on something, so that's a little bit different from a majority quorum. So, that if you only have four of you, if you only have three of you present, sitting on a case, you need to be unanimous and you can no longer have a majority vote, but with some minor exceptions, a quorum is a majority. And to discuss anything about public business, basically, one exclusion from the definition of a meeting is consultation with legal counsel. This occasion right now is not consultation with legal counsel, because the public's been invited to this meeting. So, don't expect to have a confidential relationship this evening with me, for example. But when you are meeting with an attorney, with the board's own attorney, you don't even have to call a meeting. You don't have to call it, you don't have to post a notice. That is excluded even from the definition. So, what is a public body? Basically, all municipal bodies, and importantly, the 2008 amendment makes it clear that subcommittees are also subject to the right-to-know law. So, what is a subcommittee? I think it's fair to assume that a subcommittee is any group that is designated by the group as a whole as a subcommittee. So, if you're on a board of five people and two of you get together accidentally for coffee and you start talking official business, that's not a quorum and it's not a subcommittee because it hasn't been designated as such by the group. But if the groups, if the chair says at a meeting, "Why don't you and you get together this week to draft a motion that we can discuss next week?", I think there's a good chance that that group of two is now a subcommittee. And when I say there's a good chance, it helps to know that virtually all right-to-know-law cases are interpreted against the municipality. Towns often lose these cases, so that when you say that there's a risk, it's a significant risk. And it's better to stay within the sure areas of the law. So, if in fact, you're gonna have somebody writing a motion and to prepare for the following meeting to be discussed at an open public meeting, that should be only one person unless they voluntarily ask somebody else to help them. And it should not be an appointed subcommittee because they are now, cannot have meetings without going with the notice requirements. But what is the notice requirement? The minimum requirement is 24 hours' notice, either published or posted. The 2008 amendment made it clear that one of the places you can post it, it has to be posted in two public places or published in a newspaper. One of the two public places can be the town's website. That's new. I was wondering just this evening, when I was reading a letter about how the newspaper business is going with dogs, how long, how much longer the requirement of posting in a newspaper is actually gonna survive? It's a very interesting question, but that you can think about. But it's not part of the law itself. It does, if you publish in a newspaper, you don't have to post in two public places, at least under the right-to-know law. Now, you know that, of course, other types of meetings require different kind of notices. Town meetings, you have to have the warrant posted and published if it's a special town meeting. ZPA hearings, you have to have the, a broader notice at least five days in advance. This 24-hour notice is only a minimum for all public meetings where no other, where no other requirement applies. There is an except, there are exceptions to the notice requirement. One is if there is a need for an emergency meeting. You can have an emergency meeting, but you have to. You have to notify the public that the meeting has occurred to the extent you can, so maybe call a local radio station, that kind of thing. But you don't have to wait the full 24 hours if there is in fact an emergency. The other thing you need to do is put the nature of the emergency in the minutes as to why you're doing this. Another recognized exception to the notice requirement is what's often called an adjourned session or a recessed session, where you're having a properly noticed meeting and you're gonna have to continue it for some time later. And that's okay as long as you announce at the first session the time, date, and place of the continued session. You don't need further notice. Okay, so what, so the third concept is open to the public. What does that mean? It means the public has the right to attend, take notes, make tapes, make videotapes. We had a situation in one town I advised where there was a citizen who would, you know, take the video camera and come up like this, you know, and pan the board and so forth. And I think the board can have reasonable bylaws and rulings from the chair that prevent the public's attendance from actually interfering with the business of the board. I mean, you can say, "Well, if you're gonna take a videotape, you have to stay over there." But it's important to understand that the right-to-know law by public meeting does not give anybody the right to participate in the meeting. The public can attend, but, and of course, there are a lot of occasions why boards do need to invite public participation, for example, as a public hearing. But just because it's a public meeting under the right-to-know law doesn't mean that the public can participate. And in fact, there was a criminal case that I've cited in here, State versus Dominic, where one of the selectmen, it was a selectmen's meeting in Belmont, I believe, and one of the selectmen would not stop talking despite the chair continuing to beat the gavel and so forth. And he was, they called an officer in, he was arrested for disorder of conduct, and he was, his conviction was upheld because the, and there's some nice, strong language in there about the ability of the chair to control the meeting so that the public's business can be conducted without interference by the public, or in that case, by another member of the board. All meetings must have minutes, unless there's an exception. And basically, there's, there are no exceptions to the minutes requirement. It has to be within five business days made available to the public. The contents of the minutes, the required contents of the minutes are the members who are present, other people who are participating, not necessarily all of those in the room, don't have to be listed, a brief description of the subject matter discussed, and any final decisions reached. Please do yourself a favor and take that brief description seriously. It does not have to be a word-to-word sort of description of what happened. If you are a local land use board deciding a case, you will probably want a taped or an audio recording of the meeting just in case it ever has to go to court. And your audiotape will be the main record that you would have to use in court. It shouldn't be the minutes. You shouldn't be trying to do verbatim minutes. It's just, it's just a waste of time because then the, you spend an hour the very next meeting arguing about what I really said versus what these minutes say and all that kind of stuff. And it's just a waste. You should also know that the right-to-know law itself does not have any minutes approval requirement, just what you just now did is not required to do. I mean, it's a good idea, every board does it. It helps to keep them accurate, but it's not part of the right-to-know law. So, that the requirement that they be available within five days does not mean they have to be approved within five days. It merely means the draft minutes have to be available for public inspection within five days. There are exceptions to the open meeting law when you can have non-public sessions. A lot of people still think you can deliberate in non-public session. That is wrong. You can't deliberate in a non-public session, not since 1991, unless you are properly in a subject matter, non-public session. And the, I'm not gonna talk about all of them, but most of them, you know, have to do with personnel matters, pending lawsuits, that kind of thing. If you do go into a non-public session, that does not relieve you of the requirement to take minutes with those minimum four requirements in the minutes. And if you don't want those minimum minutes to become public, you have to take a second vote to seal the minutes. The meeting, the vote to go into a non-public session does not include the vote to seal the minutes. They have to be two separate votes. So, in order to go into a non-public session, you need first to have an open session, doesn't have to be the same day as the non-public session, but you have to have a vote in open session to go into a non-public session, which cites the correct portion of statute that allows the non-public session, and it has to be a roll call vote. And then, at the end of the non-public session, if you still think you need, if you think you need to seal the minutes, you'd have another vote to do that. So, again, I invite you to interrupt anytime you want to. The second part of the right-to-know law in terms of public records, oh, let me just talk about, let me just talk about the 2008 amendments having to do with the, with electronic communications, emails and the like. We know two things, well, there's actually three major things you should know. One is that any document, whether it's, whether it's an electronic document or otherwise, which reaches a quorum of the body, even though non-sequentially, is a public record. And if you're doing email, you have no idea how many people are gonna read what you wrote. I mean, no one person has control over it. You may, you may send it to one other person, but that person can forward it to numerous others. So, you've gotta really be careful about that and assume that if you're talking about public business, it can and might appear on the, upon the front page of the paper. And, you know, and it may very well become a public record. Secondly, is that the amendments make it clear that you cannot have a meeting or discuss public business by sequential email. A meeting has to be an open public meeting, even if you have a non-public session, you have to go through the formalities of a non-public session. So, that if, my rule of thumb is if the town administrator is sending out, or the town planner is sending out information, just distributing information, that, you know, here's, here's the information about something we're gonna discuss next week, that's perfectly fine. I call that a distribution of information. But it's probably a good idea for every time you do a distribution of information to put, to write, write up at the top of it, "Do not respond." Because if the members of the body then start responding to this information, and especially if they forward it to all the other members, that becomes an interchange or an exchange of ideas or information about the subject. And that is, if that interchange or that exchange involves a quorum of the body, you're not having a meeting which doesn't comply with the right-to-know law, or you're not having a meeting. You're having discussions outside a meeting which does not comply with the right-to-know law. The third major change in '08 was that if one of the board members of your public body is in, say, Phoenix at the time of the public meeting, and you are gonna have a tough time reading, reaching a quorum, that person can participate by speakerphone. As long as the speakerphone is loud enough for those members of the public who are attending the meeting to hear it, that can constitute a quorum. That person, even though they're in Phoenix, can make up, help make up the quorum. That can only be one person, though. It specifically says two people cannot participate that way. The records section, as I just about started a minute ago, virtually anything that deals with public business is a public record unless it's subject to an exception. All public records have to be made available during regular business hours. Case law has established that if it's, that if the office is busy at the time, they can ask the person to come back at a more convenient time, make an appointment. But the outside limit is five days. The law says that within five business days, the person must either get a copy of the record they want or a reason, you know, a written reason why they, why it's unavailable, or when it might become available if it, if it, for some reason, is not available. It also is, if it's in a different form, that might be more convenient, for example, electronic form, you cannot limit the public to only one form. If it's, if you wanna give them a printed page, but you've got it on an e-version, you've gotta make the e-version available as well. You can't inquire about the motives of somebody wanting the records. You know, it might very well be somebody who's in the real estate business and, and you know Darrell's gonna send junk mail to all of your taxpayers, but you can't do anything about that. They have a right to do that. The raw materials, the tapes, the notes that somebody who is keeping the minutes at a meeting, those are public records as well. Distinguish that, though, between that and your own private notes. For example, let's suppose one person is designated as the minutes taker and they're making notes for purposes of minutes. Somebody else is also making notes but for their own personal reasons, those are not, those are not public records. So, it really is important to designate who is taking the minutes so that you know who's brought notes are, are public records and who's are not. There is a preliminary draft exception, so that if I'm a board of adjustment member, which I am, by the way, I'm on the board of adjustment in Hanover, and I'm drafting a proposed decision or proposed motion to, to present at the, at the following meeting and be discussed, that is not a public record yet. If the, if the preliminary draft reaches or is a public meeting at which it's discussed, it is a public record. Or if it is distributed to a quorum of the public body, it becomes a public record, whether that distribution is by email or otherwise. Internal personnel files, the, I'm looking at my page seven, statutory exemptions, I didn't list all of them. The one that provides the most court cases is the one about confidential or commercial information if its release would be an invasion of privacy. The court uses sort of a balancing test on this invasion of privacy thing. It certainly is fair to say that marking it credit or confidential is not gonna guarantee that it will be. They look at the individual type of document and decide whether the public benefits of disclosure outweigh the benefits of, the public benefits of non-disclosure and decide the case accordingly. In the middle of my page eight, talking about removal from office for violation of confidentiality. I don't know that this has ever happened. It's been part of the law for 13, 14 years now. But if a member of a public body participates in a non-public session and the body votes to seal the minutes, and it really is a situation where they were justified in doing so because otherwise it violates somebody's privacy rights or compromises the bargaining status of the town in some manner. And if a member of that body then later goes out and releases that information contrary to that vote, that's actually a, that's a considered violation of the oath of office and there inconceivably could be a petition to the Superior Court to remove that person from office. Again, I don't know that it's ever happened, but it's there. On page nine of my notes, I have a, nine and 10, I guess, I have a suggested board policy about emails and other between-meeting communications. Now, this happens to be one that I drafted for a planning board, but it could be, it could be easily be adapted to other boards. It talks, it talks about ex-party communications, for example, which is, which is an important thing when you're talking about a, let's say, a zoning board who has a quasi-judicial role with a case, and you're really not supposed to talk to, talk to the parties about the case outside the public hearing. That's not necessarily the same, even when there is no court. But that's not necessarily the same for the board of selectmen, for example, because most of the things the board of selectmen does are more political than quasi-judicial. And please understand, I do not mean anything by the word political. I mean, it's a policy administrative sort of issue rather than a, rather than a quasi-judicial one. So, that's there, I'm gonna go over anything like that. What do you wanna ask anything about the right-to-know law? That's not all I have on that. Well, that was, that was the 15-minute version. Now, I'm just, I'm gonna sort of skip and, skip and choose throughout the rest of this. I'm not gonna go through absolutely all of it. And these are, these are procedural issues having to do with both planning boards and zoning boards and sometimes just one of them. But on page 13, there's this section about de facto board members. And this occasionally happens where I noticed, I noticed you said you hadn't had a meeting till, since August. And this occasionally happens where, I noticed you said you hadn't had a meeting since August. I've talked to zoning boards where they haven't had a meeting for years. Whitefield, I think that the way that the Whitefield ordinance works is that the planning board does most everything, and the zoning board adjustment hasn't met for a long time until recently. And so they were saying, "Well, I don't think any of us has been appointed in recent years. We haven't observed anything about the term of office. I'm sure all of our terms have expired. We haven't taken an oath in years. Is this a problem?" And my answer is, probably not, as long as you do your best to correct that situation as soon as you discover it. But the one thing you don't have to worry about is that some decision you've made during that period of neglect is going to be held to be illegal automatically just because you weren't properly, the board members weren't properly seated at the time. If they were seated, if they were in fact seated, that's what the de facto board members' doctrine is, it's a court-made doctrine which basically says you can't challenge a decision by challenging the people who made the decision. If they were in fact sitting on that decision, they are presumed to have had, if nobody challenged them at the time, then they are conclusively presumed to have had the authority to sit as a member of that board. And the way that you get somebody off the board is by a separate legal action challenging their right to sit. But that cannot be joined with an action challenging the actual substance of the decision. So usually, you can't, a citizen can't, or a landowner can't get a case overturned just because the two or three members of the boards have not taken the oath in the last five There's a few things, starting on page 14, about rules of procedure. Every land use board is supposed to have rules of procedure. That sometimes comes as a surprise. My suggestions here, keep them simple, you do not need Robert's Rules. Most procedure rules, most boards' chairs govern by the general rule that the board chair rules unless challenged, and that works fine. So then you don't get into debates over what Robert's Rules mean. Even if you have Robert's Rules, they mean what the chair says they mean unless he or she has overruled by majority the rest of the board. On the other hand, if you do have procedural bylaws, there's case law that says you'd have to follow them. And if you don't, you get in trouble. May the chair vote? Yes. I'm always surprised at how many chairs don't vote. I guess it's okay if the chair doesn't vote, except to break a tie. But again, if you get in a ZDA position where you have only three of you, and the chair doesn't vote, then you can't make a decision, so that doesn't work. There is a fairly new case, well, '07, 74 Cox Street versus Nashua, about reconsideration. I think this applies both to zoning and planning boards. If you make a decision about an application before you, and everybody goes home and sleeps on it, and it turns out that one or two people say, you know, "We just blew it. We shouldn't have done that." Can you, can the chair call a new meeting, and can you reconsider the action, even though nobody files a motion for reconsideration? Of course, you may know that in the zoning board realm, filing a motion for reconsideration is something that a citizen has to do before they can appeal to court. That is not true with the planning board. But according to this case, both boards can reconsider on their own at any time before a decision becomes final. So if there's a 30-day period for appeal, and that 30 days has not yet run, and no appeal has been filed, the board can reconsider a case. I mean, and there may be a reason, you obviously wouldn't want to do this wholesale, but there may be very good reasons to do that. You find out that part of the evidence was fraudulent or something like that. Or, as happened in Lebanon a few years ago, the city attorney read the opinion and said, "They can't do that. They have no authority to do that." And so it went back to the board, and they reconsidered their vote.
On that issue, do you then need to notify the abutters? Obviously, it has to be done at a public hearing, post a public hearing, but, I mean, what kind of notification requirements are there?
Well, I guess I disagree with your first one. That is to say, the vote does not have to be taken at a public hearing, it has to be taken at a public meeting.
Public meeting, yes.
But if you've already closed the hearing, and in fact, I know on our board, and I think this is a good idea for all boards, is that you actually close the public hearing before you begin deliberation on the case, so that you aren't interrupted by members of the public. I mean, that can really be, and I know that there is a lawyer in New Hampshire who doesn't like me very much because I kept ruling him out of order when we were trying to decide a case, and he could not stop talking. But, you know, cases are hard to reach consensus on sometimes, and you need to exclude the public from that discussion, even though it has, when I say exclude, excluding the talking, you can't exclude them from room. But, so, yeah, I think that you could reconsider and redeliberate without calling a new public hearing, but it would have to be a public meeting. In the zoning board realm, one of the things that you really should have in your bylaws, if it's not in the ordinance, is the time period for appealing an administrative decision. That's not in state law. It says a reasonable time is set forth in the bylaws of the board. And so there's no sure way to know how much time somebody has to appeal an administrative decision unless it's in your bylaws. The statute requires that you have some procedure where the planning board and the zoning board can have joint hearings if an applicant who needs both types of approval asks for a joint hearing. I personally have not had a lot of luck with joint hearings. It's just very difficult for each board to remember what its limited jurisdiction is and not to sort of think we're one big happy family and all deciding this case together, which you really shouldn't be. But if an applicant who needs both boards' approval in some manner asks for a joint hearing, they should be able to get it.
Question.
Yeah.
If you were a member of a condominium with very distinct bylaws, but also a member of the Town of Plymouth, how do you reconcile those differences between bylaws?
I can't imagine what a conflict would be, right, Mark? What do you think?
No particular, but there are very specific bylaws for the condominium, and there are very specific bylaws for the Town of Plymouth. And if there is a conflict, how do you reconcile that?
Oh, well, let me just, I have two lines of thought, and I'm not sure which one addresses your question. Let me try both. You know, they're both interesting. One is, if you have an application before one of the boards, and the abutter is a condominium, the statute says that the public notice only goes to the condominium association and not to the individual unit owners. On the other hand, in terms of testimony, the statute says that the chair must allow testimony from abutters and anyone else who can demonstrate that their property is affected to a greater extent than the ordinary citizen of the town. And that, we had a Supreme Court opinion on that just this past year, where a unit owner was given individual standing to sue because he was able to show that the value of his unit was going down because of the effect, or might go down, because of the effect that this development on the neighboring property might have on the common space. So that was one line of track. The other track is just, which we get asked about quite a bit, is things like covenants. And there was a Seattle case that I like to cite, which is my, in other words, how do zoning regulations jive with private covenants that may affect either, you know, a condominium development or any other development that's under a set of covenants? And my general answer to that is, you know, there's a Chinese wall between them. There was a Seattle case, as I said, where a person wanted to put a gas station on a corner in a residentially zoned neighborhood and wanted a variance. The zoning board denied the variance because the site was covered by a private covenant that prohibited commercial use. The court overturned that decision, saying, you can't, you know, dealing with the covenant is something that the landowner has to do himself with the other people who have interests under the covenant, has nothing to do with municipal regulation. If they get a variance, it doesn't mean they can do it, they still have to cross the private property rights hurdle, but those are two separate hurdles. And that's the basic principle there, I think.
Thank you very much.
Starting on page 17, is a fairly lengthy section about conflicts of interest. And I'm not going to go over that in great detail. One reason is because in my, almost 25 years of practicing municipal law, this is one of those subjects that is always not very satisfactory to people. In other words, they don't care what really what the law requires. I mean, and that's fine. In other words, somebody might be toeing the line of the law exactly, and yet people still have the right to think they're doing something wrong. Not all immoral things are illegal. And so it often is the case that people are uncomfortable with a perceived conflict, even though I would give the legal opinion that legally it is not a conflict. So the things that I will talk about are my recommendations on page 21, which is how do you deal with the fact, how do you deal with that issue if you have somebody alleging that there is a conflict? And one is, reveal it. In other words, especially if you're on a land use board, and I'm not talking about the selectmen particularly, because the selectmen are a little bit different, most of the things they do are, as I said, political or policy decisions. But if you're talking about a quasi-judicial decision, you know, where you have an applicant in front of you, and you are applying the regulations and the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulations or whatever to that particular application, you have a much higher standard. And so rule number one is, when in doubt, step down. And I'm saying that as a lawyer because I don't want to have to spend the taxpayers' money defending a conflict of interest case when I don't have to, and neither do the taxpayers. And so if you really think that there is a doubt about it, you know darn well that one of the parties, if it's going to go to court, is going to raise it, and you don't want to have to deal with it. There are times when that, even that rule is a little questionable. I mean, there are certain types of situations where people are, what they're really trying to do is pack the board with people who are on their camp. And if you think that that's really what's happening, and that there's no real conflict involved, then you might not want to follow the when in doubt, step down rule. But most of the time, you would. Reveal, on the other hand, if you think you might be able to sit, and you personally don't think that there's a conflict, at least reveal the nature of what it is. I know on our board, because we have Dartmouth, and I know you have this university here, oftentimes we have applications that involve the college. And so we have this little procedure we go through, and anybody who's on the board that ever had any kind of relationship with Dartmouth or anything like that will say, you know, "My wife works for the Department of Internal Medicine," or whatever the heck it is. But I think that has nothing to do with this case, and I can decide it in an impartial way. Anybody who wants to say anything, speak now or forever hold your peace. There is a case involving Lebanon, which is the Simpson, no, it isn't, I'm sorry, Basin Company versus Lebanon, where the Supreme Court specifically okayed that kind of procedure. In other words, there was a conflict where the chair, she didn't think it was a conflict, but she said, "Here's why somebody might think this is a conflict, and here are the facts. And is anybody having a problem with me sitting?" And she waited 30 seconds at my instructions, at my suggestion, you know, looking right at the applicant, because they were the person most likely to complain. And when we got to Supreme Court, they basically said, you know, "You've got to raise it then, or you can't raise it later."
This gets back to a very basic issue. I'm a member of the select board, and my husband is a member of the planning board, and that would have been an element on the channel board here in town. It was brought up by a citizen at our last select board meeting that in itself constituted a conflict of interest, and I just wondered if you could address that.
Well, part of the way I address that is just what I said, that people can think that things are of bad appearance regardless of what the law says, but I see nothing legally wrong with that, as long as, I mean, in terms of statutes, it is prohibited for two people who are also on the planning board to also serve on the same other municipal board. So you can't have two people who are on the planning board, both on the conservation commission, for example. But that arrangement doesn't violate that. We had a situation in Lebanon for years where a husband and wife sat on the zoning board, people were continually raising their eyebrows about that, but it wasn't illegal. So I don't see anything inherently wrong with that, which again, doesn't mean that somebody's going to be curious.
I have another question. As far as emailing, you know, as far as corrections of minutes and that sort of thing, where's the fine line as far as what constitutes going beyond the limitations, the limits in being invalid?
You're talking about emails.
Yes, when you pass away emails.
Well, you know, I think that...
Where do you define the line? There's a lot of that going on, and I just want to, if you can clarify that.
Well, you know, sometimes it's hard to, the law is not made up of fine lines, I mean, it really isn't. So there's always gray areas in between, but it helps to know the general principles. I think if members of the board are talking about when to schedule the next meeting, that's not substance of any particular case, and I think they can go back and forth on that pretty much as much as they want to, as long, but if you start to get to a substantive issue that is within the jurisdiction of that particular body, then, especially under the '08 amendments, you're courting a finding of a violation if you have any back and forth that either then or later involves a total of a quorum of the board.
I'd just like to offer, coming from the federal government, any electronic transmission is a legal document and can be used as such. is a legal document and can be used as such.
Well, I don't disagree with that. You can understand law as well.
I had a question from page fourteen. Shall I ask it now or later?
Oh, go ahead.
At the bottom of the page on discussing officers.
Yes.
It says appropriate officers are chairman, vice chairman, and secretary slash clerk. Planning Board heard at its last meeting that by statute, it was only allowed to be a chairman, a vice chairman, and somebody specifically called secretary.
I looked this question up.
Oh, cool. I'll go any further then.
It's, what the statute says is that the board shall have a chair and such other officers as the board deems appropriate. So it really, it leaves it up to the individual board.
So just to clarify, we could have a title, somebody with the title of non-recording secretary and allow them to not record?
As long as you have somebody who is recorded minutes, and that that is not, and there's no mistake about that, then sure, yeah? If that's an office that the majority of the board wants to create, there's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you.
If I could just clarify, Ron, and just correct if I'm wrong, but with the minutes, it's just, you know, I'm distributing the minutes, there's everything's fine with that, and then if you want to make some kind of correction to the minutes, that's fine too. I think what you're getting at is when there's a deliberation that leads to a vote. For example, you're talking about a case, and then, you know, you're saying, "Well, should we view this case this way?" And you're opening up a discussion to the other Planning Board members, and then they're discussing that particular item. Like, let's say I send the agenda out, and then you're like, "Oh, well, we shouldn't approve this." Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
And then you're, you're inviting a conversation. "Well, I think we should approve this case, um, case number one." No, we shouldn't.
That's where you cut off.
Yeah, that's the cutoff. You don't want to do that. But in terms of...
It's very hard to say where that line is crossed.
I don't know where it's going on, and there's...
Right, but, but minutes, you know, if you say, okay, there's a typo.
I want to know what I have questions, if I can bring it, where I can bring it, and where I can shut myself off.
An individual question to me, like, on page three of the minutes, I noticed a typo? Fine.
That I understand, but I just want to know where I can carry it on before I go over, over, over.
Yeah, you can't be asking a general question to the other Planning Board members.
But if I have questions or concerns, I want to know where I can go with it, without going over.
She can ask you.
Yeah, you can ask me directly if you have a question, then there's not a problem with that, but to open it up for...
To go, go outside of you.
Yeah, and the distribution was, Planning Board members, what do you think of this case, case number one? Or is ZBA members, you know, there should be a discussion going on.
And it's hard, and it's, and it's so, so easy, if you're not careful, to go from one to the other. You say, you know, you know, you're, you're just correcting the minutes, let's say, and you say, and somebody says, "Well, I didn't really say that, because here's what I really thought about it," you know? And now you're into the substance.
But I think there's an in-between case where you're just correcting a typo and you're asking for a vote. And I think that in-between places where you're asking for clarification. If you say, according to the minutes, it says this, but I recall it differently, did it, I, did it say that? That's, that's sort of a clarification, but it does invite conversation.
Yeah.
So, so what do you do?
Well, and in, and in general, I think that that is why you, you have minutes correction sessions in public meetings, because, you know, it's, it is so, so difficult to keep substantive discussions out and about. If it's, if it truly is a typo, that's one way.
That's simple.
Planning Boards revoke, that's in, that's under our six seventy-six colon four A, is that planning boards have the authority to revoke a prior reported approval.
What page are you on now?
I am on page twenty-three of my notes. I'm sort of skipping around as I say. The reason I'm raising this issue is because planning boards almost always have two modes. One is legislative, when they're, you know, thinking about revising the regulations or recommending zoning amendments to the, to the town. And the other is quasi judicial, where they are sitting there reacting to an application which is coming before them. And it's worth, it's worth realizing that the revocation procedure is not really either one of those two modes. It is more of an enforcement mode. If, if you, if you approved a prior application and, and subject to a particular condition, and it turns out five years later that that condition has not been complied with, and it's been violated right and left, and this could be a grounds for, for revoking the, the application. I mean, sometimes you might not want to, because if it's a subdivision, they might have sold all the lots already, and revoking it makes no sense. But, you know, maybe they sold phase one, and they haven't sold phase two yet, and might, you might be able to revoke phase two until they comply with the condition, or something like that. But that is an enforcement mode. It's, it's something that the Planning Board members usually aren't used to. And the way the statute works is you actually, you file, you prepare a notice of revocation, and, and then you, then you, then you call a hearing. Now, there was a ca, there was a case on this, which, which challenged that procedure from a constitutional point of view by saying, you know, "These people are making a decision, essentially, that we are going to revoke, before they call the hearing to hear the evidence." And the Supreme Court said, this was in that Windham case that I've cited there, I think I've cited it. No, I haven't. Well, anyway. The, the court said that the, the procedure is okay, because you don't record this notice until, I mean, it's basically, you, you, you send out the notice giving the reasons why you might want to revoke, and then you give the person a chance to come in and, and offer counter evidence. Revocation can be a useful tool, and it's a useful tool that provides you with some leverage. Most of the time, you don't have any leverage once you approve something, because you can no longer withhold approval. But it's, it's the kind of leverage you can have without going to court, and so it's, it's at least a statute worth noting about. One issue which often arises is what we were just talking about a minute ago, who, in the condominium context, is who has a right to be heard? And generally, anybody who has a right to be heard also has a right to appeal, and the, the standard is what we call the week's restaurant test after the Supreme Court case that decided it, and it's basically, if, if somebody can show that their property is affected by, by the proposal under, under consideration to a greater degree than the average citizen of the town, then they, you know, even though they may, they way down the street, if they're still using the right of way, or their, their access is to be affected or something like that, they will still have a right to try, and also would have a right to appeal. Can the chair limit the time? Yes, yes, yes. You, you are not, if somebody comes and says, "I have this three-page, single-stage, typewritten letter here, which I would like to now read into the record," you do not have to allow that person to do that. You can say, "We'll put it into the record, but please summarize it in two minutes." That is perfectly fine, as long as you are even-handed about it and, and impartial about those time, time limits. It's a good idea in, in Wayne D's board hearings to make sure all of the, the questions go through the chair. I don't know either of your boards in terms of how good the chair is, but it's amazing how the, the chairmanship can influence what happens at the meeting, in the sense of allowing a, a local argument to develop in the audience, and there's no way you're going to have, ever have control again. And the best thing to do is to, you know, when, when in doubt, go back on, step back and, and follow parliamentary procedure. Advisory opinions, I'm on page twenty-five, ZBA, don't. Don't give advisory opinions. That's what your town planner or, or other administrative officer is for. Don't give opinions at all unless you have a properly-called public hearing. Planning Boards also shouldn't be giving, and individual members of the planning board also shouldn't be given, be given advisory opinions unless you have a pre-application review process, or, in other words, a conceptual process or design review process where there is a, a public meeting. Here's one thing that always comes up, which is, when is an application grandfathered from changes in the ordinance or in the regulations? Five years ago, I, I could answer that easily, and the, the, it was, it was, if a planning board application had been accepted as complete, a final planning board application had been accepted as complete by the board prior to the posting of the first public notice on the zoning change, then it was exempt from that change. Several changes have occurred since then that have changed that rule a little bit. We now have towns being able to vote, to require preliminary review for planning board applications. I don't know if you've done that or not. But then, but, so, if, once you could require preliminary review, then the legislature also decided they wanted to grandfather applications that were subject to preliminary review. So now it is not the final application being accepted as complete, it is any public hearing notice, even for a preliminary review. If the application has been given a public notice, planning board notice, and it doesn't say zoning board, planning board notice, it's been, it's subject to planning board notice, then it's grandfathered from changes which get public notice after that. Then the question that was, that was handled this year was, what if there is a, a long period of time between the preliminary review and the final review? The legislature put in a twelve-month deadline. So if, if you, if you, if your preliminary application is grandfathered, your final application will also be grandfathered as long as it is submitted within twelve months of the end of preliminary review. So when is the end of preliminary review? It's whenever the planning board says it is. And if the planning board fails to say that preliminary review is over, then the twelve months never starts. So that's a good thing to know.
A question on that?
Yeah.
You opened up with saying that some towns require preliminary review. Is that the only time, or even if it's voluntary, preliminary review does at least the clock starts?
No, it, it, the, the statute doesn't make it, I'm sorry, I'm not saying this right. The statute doesn't apply only in towns that require it. So any preliminary review, public hearing for that will, will trip the switch.
And so if you have a preliminary review without a, a public hearing, it's just a public meeting, it doesn't start the clock?
That's right. If it's just a conceptual consultation where you don't require public, public notice, then it doesn't.
Thank you.
Be sure and be aware of the developments of regional impact law, but either, either one of the land use boards, the reason the developments of regional impact law have not worked in the past is because usually the board does not see the application and realize that it is a regional impact development until the notices have already been sent out. And the, the whole point of declaring a, a development as one of regional impact is that you should be sending notice to abutting communities that find the effect of, and the Regional Planning Commission. So it's a good idea to have somebody, somebody appointed, a staff person perhaps, to, to take a preliminary look, look at this regional impact issue. Yeah.
Would the implementation of the National Shoreline Protection Act in, or water...
You mean the state one, would they?
Yeah, that one, national. As well as the state. What impact would that have on this regional impact? We're talking...
You mean, for example, if you have a development in Plymouth that could affect the, the water downstream?
Downstream of Bristol, for example.
I mean, you know, the, the, the statute, again, it doesn't have any fine lines. It's, it's, it says that the following, the following factors are included in determining whether it's regional impact or not. And it just lists some factors, and then it says, "Doubts about whether it has regional impact shall be, shall be resolved in favor of finding regional impact." So that's, that's the answer. And it doesn't hurt, that is to say, you know, the, if you, if you did get a delegation from a neighboring town that was against a project or something like that, the fact that they, that it has regional impact does not give those people the right to appeal. It might give them the right to talk, but again, the chair can sort of put reasonable limits on that, if necessary.
And we also have the, and the Duwarsit watershed area, and the impact on all the abutting communities on that watershed. Mentioned Baker River.
I mean, I guess, you know, if you're an environmentalist, then everything affects everything else on, on earth, I guess, eventually, but, I mean, you've got, you've got to, you've got to figure out a reasonable, you know, the, the, more than other projects, this has a potential for affecting areas outside the town of Plymouth. You just have to use some degree of common sense for that, I think. That, sometimes it's not helpful, but it...
It really is in that, in that statute. Nobody's ever sued anybody under that statute yet, so it's not a whole lot, a whole lot of risk as far as I can see.
Are you competent in suing in that?
What do you mean?
Are you competent enough to sue under that?
Oh, well, I know that, that one almost happened in Lebanon, because the, you know, the, if you've ever been throughout Lebanon, you know that our big commercial area there is on twelve A, south of, southwest Lebanon, is the only way that people who work in the Upper Valley and live in Plainfield can get home. And so, for, for a while, Lebanon was not notifying Plainfield of things that were happening on twelve A, and, and Plainfield threatened to sue, but they have now just begun notifying them, and nothing's happened, so.
Okay.
Site visits, talk a little bit about site visits. Obviously, site visits are a good idea. Pictures and presence are worth thousands of words, but number one is, you can't go on somebody else's property just because you're a town official. The federal constitution prevents that, that you actually have to get permission, or if permission is refused, you can get an administrative inspection warrant. If you are a local land use board, what you should do is get permission. And, you know, sometime during the hearing, "You don't mind if we come to your property as individuals and take a look at this, or we'll continue this hearing until next Wednesday at five o'clock in the afternoon when we will appear at your property." Is that all right to you? Sure. But if it's not all right with them, then, well, we may, we may have problems of getting enough information to decide this case. So I think as land use boards, you're not going to get a warrant. You're, you're basically going to decide whether to get, have enough information without the site visit, and most of the time, you won't. So if they want to get approved, they're probably going to have to allow some reasonable site visit. The, it's aw, it's really difficult to avoid, well, first of all, site visits are public meetings, and oftentimes you get this, this problem where the landowner says, "You board members can come on my land, but those so-and-so neighbors of mine, they're not going to come on my land, that's for sure." And so, you, there's only two approaches that you can take to that. One is, well, if you won't let them come, since they have a right to attend this meeting, we can't go either, and, and take that as a refusal to allow permission. The other, the other approach is the one that the board... The other, the other approach is the one that the board I sit on usually takes, which is, we don't visit the property as a group, we go there individually. One problem with that, though, that you have to watch out for is it's awful difficult not to get into a conversation with the homeowner about the application, and especially if you know him. And, you know, you just have to really be conscious and say, you know, I'd love to be friendly, but I'm not really supposed to talk about this. And...
Good question. On a site visit, if it's normal procedure for the planning board not to make any decisions or votes at a site visit, would it be all right to make a decision? We had that example probably two years ago, I guess, and we did make a decision and...
On the, on the site visit?
Yes.
Interesting. Well, there's no legal problem with doing that, as long as you are taking minutes, which you should if it's a meeting, and as long as it's an open public meeting. I, the, the, the main question I would have on that type of situation is whether you, is how you're going to get a written decision, because that's one of the things I'm definitely going to talk about here in a second, in fact, very, very soon. In fact, right now. Well, no, first, one, one issue for planning boards at the bottom page 28 here is this issue of waivers. Planning boards, if you have site plan or subdivision review, planning boards often feel as though they can waive any of their regulations that they want to. And the courts have made pretty clear that you can, unless you have a waiver provision in your regulations. So that's, that's something, you should have any regulations, it should say more than the planning board may waive any regulation. It should talk about what the standards are going to be. Either it's a regulation which because of the subject matter doesn't apply, or they get a waiver for hardship, the statute applies if, if you don't have a local waiver regulation, and that makes, and that is, that you basically have to show the same standards as a, as somebody would for a zoning variance. So it's, it's a good idea to have waiver provisions in your regulations so that you know how to do it. Now I want to talk about the written decision. 676-3 requires written decisions. Now, everybody's supposed to get a written decision. It certainly is possible to let the minutes be the written decision, but, but I don't recommend that. I, I definitely recommend a, a complete written decision. And furthermore, I recommend not taking a final vote until you have one. A lot of zoning boards, in particular in the state of New Hampshire, believe that the applicant has a right to a decision the night of the hearing. The, the law does not require that, and our board, for example, does not do it. I mean, we, we always have a deliberation meeting the following week. And in between the hearing and the deliberation meeting, somebody writes a draft motion. And then that is presented at the deliberation, it is debated. Some boards, they say, well, doesn't that give the person who's drafting the motion too much authority? If you really believe that, then you don't have the same kind of persnickety board members that we do. Notorious, the New Hampshire board members are notorious about not going along with things they don't really agree with. So, and if they do, then they shouldn't be on the board the first way. So that, that doesn't often become the final decision. I don't think we've ever adopted a written draft without changes, and without debates, and without motions to amend and cross out this paragraph, write a new one, and so on.
Quick question. At that meeting where you say, okay, we're done, public hearing is closed, direction is given to one board member to draft a decision, where that person volunteers to draft the decision, do you say draft the decision to approve or draft the decision to deny?
We don't. But, I mean, boards can handle that different ways. You can have sort of a straw, a straw vote, you can sort of have a, as long as, as long as you don't bind yourself. I mean, because I found, as a board member, much less as a lawyer, that sometimes I think after the end of the hearing that, that I, that I want to go a certain way, and I start trying to write it up, and it don't write that way. It keeps going the other way, and I change my mind. So, you know, again, you can, it is perfectly legal to have a vote the same night, have people express their, their personal views on what the issue is, and have those views put in the minutes, and then the vote taken, and the minutes are the written decision. You haven't violated any law yet, but, but there's several problems with that. First of all, if it's ever appealed, you will not get the benefit of the doubt, because the, the, the burden of proof in a zoning or planning board case is very favorable to the board, and it says that the board's findings of fact are considered prima facie reasonable and lawful. But if you've made no findings of fact, you don't have anything that, that's subject to that favorable burden. Just individual comments of board members are not findings of fact. So that definitely is part of what you, what you should have in a written decision, is findings of fact. The, the other aspects of it, I tried to put on page 30 here, the reasoning, or rulings of law, if you will. In other words, if you're a zoning board, you turn the findings of fact into a discussion of whether they support or do not support the, the special exception standards or the variance standards, as the case may be. Then a section on the action taken. It was moved by, seconded by, blanked to take the following action. A list of conditions. If you're a planning board particularly, tend to apply, tend to apply conditions more often than a zoning board, although both boards can do it. And I would suggest, if you're going to list conditions, you divide it into two categories, one being conditions precedent, meaning conditions that have to be met before the plat is recorded, such as posting bond, et cetera, and conditions subsequent, meaning conditions that have to be met after, after the plat is recorded. My, my recommendation there on page 30, always state as condition number one, that the project must be constructed and implemented substantially in accord with the plans and testimony on file. So that means, that converts all the details into conditions, in essence, so that you don't end up approving one thing and having something totally different that just happens to have the same name be installed. It's perfectly okay to alter it later if they come back.
Just one question on that, I mean, it pertains more to planning board. If the developer says, I'm going to build X, that statement is not included in the conditions, that statement that's maybe recorded at the minutes still acts as a condition? Yes or no?
It, it can, if you have language similar to what I just said, that the, the project shall be constructed and implemented substantially in accord with the plan, testimony on file. There have been several cases, including one of the, one of the endless series of Bethlehem landfill cases, that, where the, the record was just not there. Nobody knew what had been approved. I mean, they knew that they'd gotten a special exception for that landfill, but exactly what the scope of it was intended to be, nobody knew. And if they'd had a written decision that made it, made it clear what the scope was, they would, they would have been much better off. So, I mean, that's the second disadvantage to not having a, a good decision. And then the third one, I think, is, and I'm not being selfish here, but where does your attorney come in? I think, if I'm representing a local land use board, my best work is done before the board makes its decision. That, you know, somebody's designed to draft a, a decision, and, you know, if it's a particularly controversial case, they might invite me to hear, to attend the hearing, and then the, the person who's drafting the decision sends it over to me and allows me to tweak it a little bit, and maybe even say, hey, this just doesn't, this just doesn't add up, because, because you're citing different standards from the ones the court says are valid, or something like that. And that, and that, that interaction can take place between the hearing and the vote, because there's no other time for it to take place. So, you know, obviously, you can have one type of, I mean, obviously, a zoning board has, has a luxury that planning boards don't have, and that is, if you really goof up the first time, you can grant a rehearing if somebody applies for it. Yes?
You recommended that the planning board would meet the following week, is there a problem?
For the following month or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I think people expect, applicants usually expect planning board's processes to last longer than the zoning board, for some reason. I guess just it's traditional, but there's no, there's no particular reason for it, but maybe it's more complex. I mean, and that's why you have a...
One follow-up?
Yeah.
If the planning board occasionally felt that it could make a motion that night, and on some other cases, decided to take this approach of drafting a motion and discussing it at the next meeting, would that, would the issue of capriciousness fallen, fallen here in terms of not treating people fairly?
Probably not. I mean, it, it's very difficult to predict in advance of whether a board is going to be accused of being discriminatory. We, we know that you are not technically bound by precedent. In other words, if, if the board this year is made up of different members than the board last year, and, or even if they aren't, you decided a similar case last year the different way, but you now think it was wrong, you are not doomed by the law to repeat that mistake. On the other hand, if you have a, if you have a continuous pattern both before and after a particular application, where it is in fact treated differently, and particularly if there is evidence that it's being treated differently because of some kind of personal issue with the applicant, or, or the butter, or something like that, that's a prime case where, where you could be, you could even be subject to some kind of civil rights lawsuit, depending on the circumstances. The Supreme Court, in the OLEC case from about six or eight years ago, time flies when I'm not paying attention, said that it is possible under the 14th Amendment to, to be, to violate equal protection even though the class is, consists of only one person. That was, that was a case where the applicant was a woman who had sued the town three or four times, and everybody hated her. But they discriminated against her on a particular type of, of application, and she was held by the US Supreme Court to have a valid equal protection case, even though she was not a member of a minority, racist religion, or anything like that. So, I mean, in general, you want, you want to aim towards impartiality at all times, but that doesn't mean that you are doomed to do something the same as something you now think is mistaken. Yeah.
I guess, I don't know whether you are against this question or not, but if an applicant files, and there's a site plan, the planning board decides to do a site plan, the property owner, the applicant refuses a site, does it, does the planning board have the right to decline that applicant?
A site visit, you're talking about?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Does the planning board have the right to refuse that applicant based on that fact?
Most of the time, it would.
Most of the time?
Well, I would, I, I think in, in the vast majority of cases, a, a visit of the site, that a board can consider a visit to the site to be a necessary element in, in gathering sufficient information to know how to decide the case. I mean, there might be exceptions to that, but I can't think of too many. I mean, it's, and it's because, you know, every property is unique, as, as we know about real estate. And I know lawyers that do real estate law, and they never see the property, and that's a bad habit to get into, because you never, there may be something out there that you have no idea unless you go.
I'm just wondering, the, the legality of it. Does the planning board have the right to refuse the applicant based on a fact?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. The decision can be, the applicant refused access to the property, therefore we have not, we do not have sufficient information to grant this, this, this application. Yeah?
Thank you. Follow that up. What if the, what if the site was, was in such a nature that the planning board felt they needed to wait until the snow melted or mud season was over? And what, what's a timely process for, for the site visit?
Well, you know, again, it's hard to generalize, but if it's information you absolutely need, and the ground is fro, I mean, you know, somebody comes and they should have dug, dug test pits and they can't do it because the ground is frozen, you know, you're going to have to wait, okay? You have to, you're going to have to wait until they can do it.
Thank you.
By which I mean basically the same thing that I just talked about, which is, you can disapprove the, disapprove the application without prejudice. I mean, you, you basically, you give the applicant a choice. You say, you know, would you like to continue this, or would you like us to act on it today? In which case, we're going to, we're going to disapprove it, and we have to start over, you know?
But I think I should clarify, because I think I know where this one's going. There's site plan review, but then there's also subdivision application. And I think one that they're talking about is, there was a subdivision, that the test pits were already done, the, the wetland scientist was already out there, and it was a matter of going to the site when it's covered in snow, or waiting four months for the snow to melt. So the subdivision's different than the site plan, that's just what I wanted to say.
Yeah. Well, no, but I mean, both boards, all land use boards are basically in the same position as juries. You are the fact finder, and you're not required to believe anybody. If you have a reason why you think that the applicant's wetland scientist is non-credible, you know, you should have regulations that allow you to check on it somehow, or, you know, call for an independent wetland survey, or, you know, whatever you need to actually get the right information. And, and, you know, that's not, that's, you know, you talk, you talk about, you talk about acting impartially, but you can't, you can't measure impartiality by the numbers. Sometimes, some people are just credible, more credible than others because they're unreliable. And you don't have to treat unreliable people as if they were reliable. I mean, that, that's part of being a fact finder. I'm pretty much done, I think, with organized stuff, and it is, has been a, an hour and a half since you started the meeting, so I'll be glad to answer other questions that you have, or at least try to.
Any questions from the board?
I'd like to follow up your last comment. So if, if the board feels that they do need to call on a third party for yet another impartial examination, who pays, who pays for that expert to come in?
It is recommended that you have something in your regulations that say that you can require the applicant to pay for that person. If you don't have something in your regulations, then it comes down to the old question of, is it the case that you otherwise don't have enough information to, to act on the application?
But this applicant, let's say this applicant already has paid for...
A certified.
For a certified, you know, scientist of some sort to approve.
Oh, sure, that, that in and of itself doesn't mean that you can't require them to pay for a, a separate peer review. In fact, for most major projects, most boards do require that.
And could that peer review be done by somebody who's normally retained by the town, or should, or should the town go even further afield to make sure it seems more impartial?
You know, it could be somebody who works for the town. It could be somebody independent retained by the town. Just so you're getting somebody who, whose judgment you trust.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Been great.
I hope that's helpful.
Food for thought, a lot of food for thought. Maryam, do you have anything else? You're all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be seeing you again soon.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you again soon.
If you're lucky, you won't.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.